It is 7 o'clock on Monday, August 5th, 2019, and this is a regular meeting of the Richfield School Board that I called to order. In attendance this evening, we have board members John Ashmead, Paula Cole, Tim Paulus, Christine Malik, and I am Crystal Brackey. Board member Peter Tensing is unable to be with us this evening, and Superintendent Yunowski joins us at the table. We will strive to remain focused on Richfield Public Schools' mission statement. "Richfield Public Schools inspires and empowers each individual to learn, grow, and excel" as we conduct our meeting this evening. And just a special thank you for everyone who is with us this evening. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda before us. Is anyone prepared to move the agenda as presented?
So move.
Second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus and a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the agenda is approved. So we will move into the Information and Proposals Non-Auction Items section of the agenda, which this evening begins with a superintendent update. And we are thrilled to welcome Bill Davis from the Spartan Foundation as the first part of the update, so I will let you do the honors.
Yes, kicking off our meeting today is Bill Davis representing the Spartan Foundation. And the Spartan Foundation does an incredible job supporting our community, supporting our students. They have one of all of our favorite events that happens every spring. They host a scholarship breakfast where the Spartan Foundation raises money for the future of our students to go on to the next steps in their lives and the next steps in their careers. They have a great golf tournament that happens every year. It is the unofficial beginning of the summer, and so it's exciting to participate in one of the major fundraisers at Spartan Foundation. But also what they do is they share scholarships. And with that, I'm going to bring Bill Davis up, who is going to share information about scholarships, and I believe he has a check to share with us. Can you just step up to the table? Oh, here, why don't we go down to this end where there is a flat microphone for you? You don't even have to speak into it, it'll pick it up.
Hi, John. How are you? Well, we're all friends here, and I've been here before. I come here as Bill Davis, President of the Richfield Spartan Foundation, and also a 1960 graduate of Richfield High School. Thirty years ago, Bob Lindgren had an idea that we needed to raise some money to supplement the athletic and the finance budgets of Richfield High School. And he thought, well, I have a golf tournament, and we use the Pro 6 to fund that. He thought that the shelf life or something like that might be ten years, which is celebrating another thirty. During that period of time, we've raised over, we've been able to donate to the high school in the form of supplemental to the fine arts and the athletic department, also scholarships, over $400,000. Up until 2009, the golf tournament funded two scholarships. The Spur Award for the outstanding senior male athlete, and the APNA Award for the outstanding female athlete. People started to hear about the foundation, and they liked what we did. And so through donations from other foundations, interest of people, bequeaths, memorials, and things like that, beginning in 2009, we were able to increase the number of scholarships that we could give to the students. We started at two, as I said. We went to five, then we went to eight, then we went to 12, then we went to 15, then we went to 20. In the last four years, we've been able to provide for deserving seniors, 25, including the Spur Award in the year, 25 $1,000 scholarships. We think that there's going to be a 31st year, and I hope that we're back here again. But my pleasure tonight is to present the school a check here for $25,000. I'll get that to you, Steve, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I quickly turn that over to the treasurer of our school board. So thank you, and again, it's an honor and excitement to watch the Spartan Foundation, as Mr. Davis shared, continue to expand the support of our students and continue to be that ongoing support to students. It's amazing and impressive, the work that this community does to make sure that the youth of Richfield become the future for tomorrow. So thank you, you're inspiring to all of us.
Thank you. I want to add that someone who received similar scholarships in high school and college, the value and the meaning is, it goes beyond the money. It really means something if you receive it, and it's really empowering as a student. So I want to thank you for doing this for so many years, and really to, it's really meaningful to our students.
I'm very proud of that, that I'm most proud of what we do is what we call the "against all acts" program. There are students who have been through a lot of personal turmoil, but still have been successful in school career. And we have some that are really weak, that are taking a consideration, just leaving. And we get 13 of those out.
All right, so one of the initial exciting things that we have going on in Richfield, if you haven't noticed, is some construction. And some of that construction is occurring on the Richfield Dual Language Site, the Richfield STEM Site, and obviously, Richfield High School. And so I'm going to bring the team up to talk a little bit about some of our facilities' project updates. And so I'm going to bring up Craig and Andy. Why don't you guys step around? We have a hidden microphone on the edge of the table there, and so if you're in the vicinity, it actually picks it up.
We're good. Excellent. As Steve said, we have, we're continuing our ongoing presentations of updates. We are heavy duty into construction season, and so we're going to be providing regular updates at each one of the board meetings. I was remarking to Andy, with some of the pictures that are in tonight's presentation, things have changed significantly even over the weekend and through today. So he's going to be sharing an update on SaaS to each one of those projects and responding to any questions you may have.
Thank you. So current design status, at the last meeting, I talked about how we had the Centennial Drawings that were issued, the schematic design, design development. We have those, our estimates have been completed. We've got those over to WOLD. They're reviewing the estimates, and then we're going to be scheduling a meeting here in the next week or two to go in detail on those estimates. Centennial and Sheridan are actually in the same boat. We've completed estimates on both of those. So we'll review those, and then we'll be at a point where we'll be able to bring those design development documents to you guys for presentation to say, you know, here's the project that we're planning to go out in the construction documents with, and it's within budget, or here it sits in accordance to our budget. The middle school design documents, we did receive those on July 29th, and so we're working on those estimates as well, and going through the same process as that. We'd expect that that would probably be presented to the board at the following board meeting after the Sheridan and Centennial estimate. We're sitting in a pretty good spot. We're a little bit over budget, but it's design development, we've got contingencies in there, so we're in a spot where we're comfortable right now, and that's why we're working through those to really dial that in. We've also got a few other things on our plates right now, so that's not a top priority to bring to the board meeting right now. Current project status at RDLS. So this is the kitchen addition, we'll start there. The steel roof joists are in place, so even the two pictures are outdated at this point. Steel roof joists are in place on the top picture where, that's the kitchen addition coming out to the west of the existing building. The interior block walls are complete, we've got exterior waterproofing that you can see on there, and the brickwork's underway. The roofing is also underway now, and the kitchen walk-in cooler and freezers are being set in place, so we're trying to get that watertight so then we can start the tile work in the kitchen. The media center addition, so this is two different pictures within a couple days of each other. The bottom picture is before we had the roof deck and joist in place, and the top picture, those are now in place. That brickwork's been completed on the masonry walls in the media center. The roofing's to begin as well. We're prioritizing the kitchen over the media center for when the roofers get there, but they're actually putting down some temporary roofing to get it watertight in order to keep going underneath. The entrance addition, so we've also got the structural steel set. This again is two different pictures of the same area within days of each other, so the structural steel was set, the bar joists were set, and then below that, the joist and deck are in place, the brick veneers on the masonry wall below that. And we're working on that to get that enclosed and keep going on the finishes inside that in the entrance addition, make sure that's ready for the start of school. We've also started the pool demolition. That looks completely different now, they worked over the weekend on that. The whole building's pretty much down at this point, and they're just in the process of hauling it offsite. The lower picture of that one is, so this picture here is, we've got large drainage, storm sewer drainage structures that go in underground, so that's the excavation where that will take place. They're very similar to what you see in the high school parking lot right now, those giant structural, those steel tubes, those actually go in the ground, and then all the stormwater goes into there, and then they filter out into the ground before they tie into the city sewer. That's some of the new infiltration rules that cities and water sheds have in place nowadays. So here's some other pictures of RDLS. So in the classrooms, you can see in this picture, we started popping some of that color into those classrooms by painting those existing beams and columns. The upper right-hand corner is the structural steel. When you come into the building now, because we're building a roof above the roof for the two additions to tie in, so that's a structural steel for that. This is the mechanical work, it's down the hallways, we've got ceiling grid in place there in many areas. And then this is a picture of the new piping for the displacement ventilation units, it's the new heating and cooling units that go along the wall in the perimeter of all the classrooms, so those are all getting plugged in place. Those are pretty well nearing completion now, so we can start flooring here this week. Current project status over at STEM. The interior renovations, the bathroom renovations are ongoing with tile installed, the third-floor bathrooms, one gang has the tile nearly completed, the other one's getting close, they're working their way down. The media center renovations are continuing, we've got some pictures of that later on. The flexible learning spaces, everything's sheet rock, taped, sanded, we're starting to paint, we're starting to pull all those finishes together, and the casework's all onsite. That's a picture of the gym with all the casework in it. Some of that's been brought into the classrooms now as well to get set in place. So here's some of those pictures of those classrooms. Well, it's got the carpet on the one side of the classroom, and then we've got the little LVT nook by where the sinks are, and then they're putting down protection so they can still get in and finish the mechanical work without affecting the new carpet. This is a picture of the tile in one of those bathrooms, this is actually the plumbing wall, so all the toilets will go on this wall. And then the lower right-hand corner is the pad for the new transformer that's been set, so that's all been bored in, and we're ready to set that new transformer, we're scheduling the elevator to excel on that. All in all, STEM is going very well, knock on wood. As you can see, there's tarp going in place, we're over that hump with the finishes going in in many areas, and things are looking real positive there. At the high school, the entrance addition, the below-grade masonry work's completed, the structural steel's supposed to be set this week. The northwest connections have been completed with below-grade masonry, waterproofing, and they have been backfilled, so that we can start bringing that out of the ground with that structural steel. And the site utility work continues with the storm sewer system that I mentioned that you see out there now. They set one of the large structures today, and then backfilled it as the rain started to come, and then they'll open that back up tomorrow and keep going with the storm sewer. The new high school administrative space, the former DO space, we've got a lot of painting completed in there, the ceiling grid's in. We got a delivery of 1,200 lights today, so those are going to start getting slapped in place, so we can start getting those finishes done, the mechanical connections, and then we'll pad that out, carpet it, and get ready to turn that over. We got furniture scheduled to be delivered the week of August 12 through the 16th in that space, and we're on track for that. The new courtyard addition, we got the underground footings complete, the foundational grate beams are all poured and backfilled, and the topsoil's removed and the sand pushing is craned into the courtyard. That's some of those pictures, those three pictures that I've got there are actually, there's a yellow bucket, so they lift that into the courtyard, they fill it up with topsoil, they crane it out, they dump it, they fill it up with sand, and crane that in. So that's been a lengthy process over the last few days to just get the topsoil out and the sand in. It's a huge crane that we've got out there to do that. It'll be back here tomorrow or Wednesday, I believe. And then the structural steel will get set once we get all that sand pushing in there to tie into the existing building as well. The interior renovations, so we got the media center renovations continuing with finishes, that's getting painted right now. Finishes are underway throughout the building with ceiling grid, the classroom addition, or the classroom tower, that north classroom tower, we're replacing mechanical beams on the second and third floor, we've got the ceiling grid going in and placing all those corridors. So again, those lights that showed up can now start getting put in place, and we can finish that up. And then here's some other pictures of work at the high school. So the upper left-hand corner is down on the lower level, that used to be a storage area, and there there's an enormous mechanical unit that sits down there that will feed the commons area. So it's a, that unit is roughly 25 by 12. The upper right-hand corner is the old wall of the cafeteria, it was all clay tile and brick, and that was demolished and tore down, so that's actually part of the next phase of work, but because of the demolition that takes place with that, we wanted to get that done this summer before our kids get in the building, because if you're jackhammering while kids in the building, you can feel it on the other side of the school regardless. So we got that done, and also demolition crews are starting to free up this time of the year, because we've got to start putting things back together instead of tearing them apart. The lower left-hand corner, that is a picture of the first-floor commons area, where it'll be open other than those columns, those will all get wrapped in tile. And then the lower right-hand corner, that's those stormwater structures that are out in the parking lot that you see. And then the larger picture on the right-hand side is one of the music rooms, so that flooring was all abated, and we're looking to start putting the flooring back in there at the end of this week. So overall, at the high school, we've got some schedule concerns. The main entry is our primary concern, as well as the kitchen. We had a lengthy meeting today to talk about the plans with that and where we're going to be on the start of school and what will lag behind that date, as well as when teachers are coming back, when students are coming back, when freshman orientation is, what that looks like. So we've got a plan in place for those scenarios, and then we're meeting with the city tomorrow to go over that and talk about exiting and code requirements, and here's where the kids will be able to go, and this will be safe, because the number one priority with the city in order to allow us occupancy, as it should be, is life safety. So as long as life safety and exiting are in place, and then we're getting that fresh air into the building, then we can work around temporary partitions to keep construction areas clear from where people are going to be. So that's what we know right now, it changes on a daily basis. There's a good plan in place, we've got a lot of areas that will be completed before the 23rd is the date that we discussed with Teresa Rosen today about allowing teachers back into the building, but we still need to keep people out so we can just get everything buttoned up and tidied up. And then we just have those two areas that we're concerned with right now, which will be the main entry. And right now, that's projected to wrap up like the second week of September, around September 13th to 15th. But that's also contingent on weather, because that's still not enclosed right now. And then the kitchen, that's in flux as well right now, we've, that's the hot topic of conversation, because we've worked with Pam as well in food service about contingency plans and what we need for serving versus food prep and that type of thing, so we've got some plans that we're working on as well along those lines, so that we have food prep ready, but we may have to pull serving equipment out into the commons area to serve out there. And then we're also going to review that plan with the health inspector here in the next week to make sure they're on board. So we've got a lot of moving parts right now, a lot gets done every day, we've still got a lot of work to do, but I think it's realistic. The plan that we laid out this morning with the areas that aren't going to be complete seems very realistic.
And we'll obviously be back, before questions, we'll also be back again two weeks from now with sort of that next process update and talk a little bit further about those next pieces.
Just one question, just to clarify, you suggested that the main entry area is likely second week of September. You didn't say a date for the kitchen, but it suggests it's slightly further behind? Or is that something that could catch up?
No, right, no, it depends on the serving, actually. We're actually looking, it's looking like the first week of September right now, like the end of that first week of school, but there's some unknowns there still, we've got to get over that hump on.
Right, how the serving would work, what's allowed within code, things like that.
Right, yeah. Thank you. And we've done some analysis on square footage compared to the old cafeteria with what we have in the new commons space, and we have adequate space to be able to set up tables to serve food in those spaces. And so for the, with the main entry forecasted to not be complete by the start of school, which I think is very real, our plan is to enter the building just like we did at the end of school last year through door five.
Tim and I are able to walk through the building with Craig as our professional guide just over a week ago, and it is really extraordinary to see what is happening inside. And so I look forward to other board members and of course, our students and staff and the public to be able to really see what has taken place in the span of a very short summer. It's incredibly impressive, and it was great to be able to see that. My question is probably more for Craig, but I'll let you two decide who's going to answer, which is just, how are we thinking about communication with families and students, just so they know what to expect? Again, as we know more each and every week about what our buildings on these three sites are going to be like on day one of school.
So I think clearly, as things become better defined, is when we will have that information out. We've been posting on Facebook some of the snapshots, and you know, as we talked about, it's amazing to see what even happens within a week. And so even some of those pieces out there, as a separate, we completed, well, a week ago, we were about halfway through our construction season. So we've torn things down, now it's watching things go back and being built back up. As we have definitive information as it gets to that week or two before school, if there are changes or impacts, that's when we'll be communicating, because that's when we'll be more confident in what that means, instead of presenting one thing, and then a week later having to present, oh no, never mind, now it's better, or, oh no, here's what's going to happen. So as that's defined, is when that information will be shared out, roughly one or two weeks before school starts is what we're going to be anticipating, if there are changes from what normal expectations would be.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate this. See you again in a couple weeks. Wow, and in between them. See you back at the board, yeah, exactly. All right, so with that, we also have a pre-K, an early childhood program update, so I'm going to bring up Patrick Barrage and Carol McNamara Commerce, and they are going to step to the edge of our table in our embedded microphone to be able to talk a little bit about, here's where we are in pre-K. Obviously, the state took a while to define what our funding was, and we wanted to really make sure that we were providing need-based early childhood programs. We really looked at what was asked for, and it really works to fill those spots at parent desire and within our funding. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Patrick and Carol.
Good evening, school boards. Good to see everyone this summer meeting. Thank you for having us. As Steve said, this is, both Carol and I will be presenting the early learning pre-K updates, as well as some other alternatives that community education is looking at as far as extended preschool options. Early learning is really alignment with the district strategic plan of providing challenging, irrelevant, and engaging educational opportunities for our students. We're here to provide a high-quality early education to prepare all of our students for kindergarten. What we really are trying to do is inspire our students to grow, provide really some quality education, quality instruction, and be able to leverage our resources and programs available here at Richfield Public Schools. I was wondering why Mary was looking like, why are you looking at me? It's you. Okay, right there, there we go, there we go. Okay, early learning. Early learning has steadily expanded their BPK seats from the original grant in 2016-17, from 142 seats to now seats of 202 seats. As part of some of that expansion, we've added additional sites here at Central, and we've also added some full-day classrooms at RDLS over the years. While serving those 202 kids, we've also served 18 early childhood special education students as well, which brings our total 220 seats throughout the district. This model allows us to fulfill our goals of providing our children with high-quality educational experiences. Along with our four-year-old program, we've also served 72 three-year-old children also as a model of either Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday model, both AM and PM, and each of those sessions about two and a half hours. Who do we serve? 59% of all of our students qualify for our pre-15s lunch program and our four-year-old program, and 54% in our three-year-old program. Our family is made up, in our classrooms are made up based on our state report ethnicity in this fashion. 30% of our students are white, 11% of our students are black, 34% of our students are Hispanic, 12, 33, I'm sorry, 34% is Hispanic, 12% are Asian, and then 13% of our students identify themselves with two or more races. So with this, there were really two primary changes from this year to, from last year to this year. Centennial will receive a full, additional full-day preschool classroom. Last year, they only had a full-day classroom and two one-half-day classrooms. Central, which had a full-day program, that program is sent over to Centennial, they will receive the two one-half-day, half-day classrooms. And so that, and in addition, we're going to add a half-day AM class to Central. In 2018 and 19, in our three-year-old program, 15 additional children were identified for our early childhood special education. And so that brings us to a grand total of 33 children that have been identified in our special education program. In that, in that process, what we will do is, we will spread those 33 seats throughout the district in a least restricted environment. And our least restricted environment is putting them as part of our volunteer pre-K program. These services will still, now, we will still have services, and we still will service our students through center-based special education services. So we still have some of our day center classes here at Central. The new schedule will now serve 235 children. 202 seats will remain as voluntary pre-K, and then the 33 seats for early learning special education. Some of our reasoning is this, we had a high request from our, from our Richfield families for full-day options at Centennial and at RDLS, and so that's one of the reasons why we made the switch to send a full-day class over to that school. There were 15 more students identified for early childhood special education in our four-year-old program, which brought our number to 33, and so we wanted to provide our students with the best benefits in general education. Updates. Letters were sent out to our families the week of July the 22nd. Students were placed based on their first choice in order to determine, in order determined by the lottery and availability of seats. Applications received after the lottery, they were placed into available classes in the order in which we received them. As of July the 30th, and I actually have some updated news, we reported, we have 59 out of our 60 full-day seats, we have all 60 of our full-day seats are full, and we have 121 of our 142 possible half-day seats full at this time. The early learning team has contacted all families, and confirmations are scheduled to be completed by this Friday, August 9. Early learning will continue to accept any new applications throughout the summer and the school year, and place them on, place them into available seats. On August the 19th, we have a number of seats that parents have asked outside of our district, and we have not fulfilled those seats. On August the 19th, all those seats, we will try to fill them through using our out-of-district waitlist with the remaining seats. At this time, I'll turn it over to Carol McNamara Commerce, and she'll get to you about some community education options.
Thank you, Patrick. Good evening, everyone. For community education, while the state was making their legislative decisions regarding the funding, our the funding, our staff was exploring some options for fee-based preschool, which may help support our Richfield pre-K offerings here. We spent our time gathering information from other school districts, from the state of Minnesota, Hennepin County, and various childcare agencies. And we focused on these four primary goals, to develop some pilot program options that would support Richfield's pre-K offerings and also allow us to prepare our department to be able to expand services and work together throughout the upcoming school years. As a small department with limited resources and an expectation of a fee-only supported fee-based self-sustaining program, we feel it's really important to start small with a manageable pilot and just be cautious in how we set ourselves up for a successful future. And by working closely together with our early learning team, we know that we can build out a timeline of offerings that would complement our preschool programs and prepare our students for success in kindergarten and beyond. It's just a matter of maximizing our resources, sharing our staff, working together to make our system the best, most efficient that it can be. So our team was able to propose several models of pilot programs which could enhance the Richfield preschool offerings. Preschool Plus is the title for any of the models, it's an extended enrichment experience. So it's different, it's not a childcare service, it can serve the function of childcare and meet the needs for care that some families may have, but it's a program that is added on as a program students attend every day, every school day, rather than a flexible schedule where you come for certain hours. This program, this enrichment, would build upon the curriculum of the voluntary pre-K, enhance that, apply those skills, and work on social, emotional, and other skills in their extended hours. The other benefit to us starting up this pilot program, we would be based here at Central, we have classroom space that we could maximize, we have early learning staff with our early childhood special education and our other preschool classes here that we can combine hours and provide a comprehensive service, and we also have our support team in place here. Families can access scholarships for preschool extended programs through Think Small, which is our regional Pathways One scholarship administrator for this area, so we would be able to assist families with that for their fees as needed. And then these are the three leading examples of some models that we felt and that we had proposed to bring forward. The half-day extended, the half-day extended is basically targeted to those less popular, what we call half-day, which is two and a half hours a day in a school day, and that two and a half hours is not as popular, particularly with the times, for a lot of the general non-school working public. It also doesn't align well with most childcare facilities where, how their fees are structured or where they can take the students. So this model, we give the parents a choice, either just keep the half-day or add on preschool enrichment for a fee. It aligns with morning classes, for example, this is a central schedule, it could possibly accept students from other sites that are on that same schedule, so you could take in students and build an extended classroom that way. The second model is a full-day embedded model, so that's offered as a full day. The voluntary pre-K would still be included, and that funding would support just that part of the day. So the parents would pay a fee for the full day, but the fee would be reduced by the amount that the voluntary pre-K already covers. So it's a wraparound type of thing. The families aren't given a choice if they're in that model, it's just offered as a full-day option. And they get the voluntary pre-K, which on the district side is flexible in when you can push in the curriculum with the teacher, you can schedule the staffing and share that with your other classrooms, and the parents are all getting that consistent curriculum and that same amount of time and experience, but you have the whole day to take care of all of that and all of that sort of programming with the enrichment. The third option is a full standalone preschool, which is offered as a fee-based with no voluntary pre-K funding, and this could be another option for Richfield Public Schools as a preschool open to a broader audience. It's something that would have the same curriculum, we could still have those efficiencies of staffing, but the parents would transport their students each way, and it would be another full-day option. So any of these, and perhaps some other models, could be started and could be developed over the coming years as a community education fee-based option. And you know, taking the lead from our early learning team and you know, the board's interest and what the families are telling us that they need and want, then those are the directions that we could pursue. So currently, a fee-based option was not included in the notifications on the updated class offerings. The preschool plus has not been advertised, it is simply some proposed models that are the best models that we feel will work. Part of the reason for not including that is really the short timeline to notify families, having that ability to have them make changes in their situations, collect the fees, and gain a minimum number of student enrollment, which is the minimum revenue. It was determined best to wait at this time. As with all fee-based programs, you do need that minimum number of enrollment, which is the revenue that is going to cover your program, everything about your program cost. So without that enrollment and that short turnaround, you could end up canceling fairly quickly. So you need a longer timeline to make sure that you have enough, or you need another funding source to be there as a backup in case you either don't make that minimum or you start out with the minimum and then you lose some people along the way. We don't want to have to cancel an extended program and potentially then lose the students that are in the half-day voluntary pre-K. But we are prepared to offer the pilot for next school year. It could be rolled out with all of our preschool options as a part of our recruitment, which all of our options need to be ready in October here, already for the 2021 school year. And there is a potential, as with all community education programs, if there's need and interest to develop some non-school day offerings, or also some summer offerings next summer as well. So Patrick and I are happy to take any questions or collect any feedback that you may have.
Just a second. We wanted to bring some of the pilot ideas that this team had come together to the board, just so we can see those ideas. Given that this was a budget year, obviously it was a very tight timeframe, and with pilots, there was actually a significant risk that if we weren't filling, we would be creating a budget deficit through that program. As we look to expand some possible options, next year obviously is not a budget year, and so that provides us a little bit better of a timeline rather than scrambling over the summer. And as we look at our priorities and we look at funding for next year, we can look at some options for adding that. We also have some time this year, as we'll have, if we look back in the presentation, there are a larger waitlist for full-day programs, so there's some families who would prefer full day over half-day. And so we may have some conversation about explorings through survey with them, would you be willing to pay for that additional half-day, which would then give us a much better idea of what type of programming we can run, and at what actual cost and what enrollment we would have. So I just wanted to summarize that for the board, and then, any questions for Patrick or Carol?
The fact that you were responsive to the Centennial families that were interested in all-day programs, so I think it's really nice that we really are paying attention to what the needs are and meeting those needs, that's really good to hear. I'm wondering, like, how do you decide placement? Like you said, a lottery, so you literally like, people's choice comes up and then you put them in, the first ones that come up get their...
So sort of how the lottery works is we have a lottery winner. This past year began in the middle of December and the end of January. So it gives, we expand that from, for previous years. So we wanted to give all our families an opportunity to, one, get information, to fill out the information, and then get the information back into us, and it be a level playing, as opposed to first come, first served. And once those, once those groups come in, we basically put them into a computer system that, that gives a random number to each of the families, and that random number is then put in an order. And then from that order is where we try to, we first look at their first choice and try to satisfy their first choice the best we can. When we get to say their second choice, then we'll have to choose their second choice. That's one of the reasons why this year we also are contacting all of our families, because allocations, some of the allocations that they saw in the original lottery is different than our change of allocation. And so we wanted to, one, we placed those families there, and then we called them to confirm that this is a, this is the spot that they will accept. And so right now, I've got, just so that you know, we have 86% of all of our families, all of our families have been contacted, 86% have already confirmed, we're looking for another 33 families that we're just getting confirmation for.
So what I was wondering about is how we're, what kind of outreach we have planned for Richfield families, seeing that it'd be nice to fill the empty spaces with Richfield kids.
Absolutely. We are, we are doing, as part of our enrollment efforts, we are doing some outreach to some of our partner communities beginning this week and throughout the rest of the summer. We also will be participating as part of the back-to-school program that the city of Richfield is, is participating in, so we will be participating in that. Make no mistake about it, we want our Richfield families to participate. And so we, this is really our last resort if we have to go to that, but I also wanted to share, we need to also fill those seats as well, because our budget is based on filled seats, not the empty ones, but we will try to fill it the best we can.
Thank you. My question was actually touched on by Steve a little bit, and I'm sorry, I know it's really hard to hear with a fan in person. Hopefully it's catching up fine on the mics. It's not catching up fine on the mics. Oh dear, okay. I'll think about that while I ask my question, which is just how we can use the next couple of months to gauge what people's interest would be in these various pilots, and to also get a sense of what is the fee threshold that people would be able to afford and tolerate as part of this. So I am definitely intrigued and hopeful that we can collect some good information and do really good outreach so that as we make a decision about whether to go down one of these paths for preschool plus, that we have some good information to draw from on doing so.
So that will guide their actions in the coming months in terms of gathering info from our half-day families about would they be interested or willing to participate, and what does that look like? And so we will definitely be doing that, and that is obviously part of the plan from a pilot perspective. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you both.
This is very helpful.
All right, final part of the superintendent report is policy 208 and guideline 208-1, board self-evaluation. So the board will be hearing or be sharing back the results of my evaluation later this evening. The board does a very thorough job, and then they turn to self-evaluation. And so as part of the board policy, the board members will take some time, and you'll see a reflective sheet as each board member for themselves will conduct a self-evaluation, and then determine whether or not there is a future conversation about overall goals. And so what we will likely do is when I begin sharing my drafts of goals, part of what board members do is share goals to work in and integrate together, so board goals and superintendent goals end up aligned, and that we work together in that goal process. We wanted to make sure that we had in the board packet, the board self-evaluation process, which board members will undergo in the coming weeks, guided by our board chair.
And just to be transparent, my thoughts on this is that we should be really probably aiming for that second meeting in September before we were to have a conversation at a board meeting about it, just in light of the end of the summer, the beginning of the school year, and a number of other things that I know we already have lined up. So this really is just getting it on everybody's radar, and I would say, think about that meeting on September 16th as the time that we will likely come back and have conversation.
Perfect. With that, we move on to, or that is the end, and we move on back to the board chair for consent agenda.
Back to me.
Yes.
So yes, because we have no commendations, we will move on to the approval of the consent agenda containing routine business items. If there is no item that a board member would like to have pulled for individual consideration, we could entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented at this time. So we have a motion by Ms. Malik and a second by Ms. Cole, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the consent agenda is approved. We have eight items of old slash new business before us this evening, all of which are change orders related to facilities projects. So Craig Holgie, our chief administrative and human resources officer, looks like you are going to present this rundown of change orders for us.
I will present the rundown of change orders, and he is waiting anxiously in the wings to go into details on any of these if you want. Most of these are small, non-substantive changes, just mechanically changes, there's one larger one that's included in this that we've talked about. The first one is change order one at the high school for changes in plumbing plan reviews, as well as the plaster ceiling demolition, that's a $23,945 and 54 cent change order. What I'll maybe do is go through the three that are at the high school, and then you can choose to combine if you want, or act on them separately, and then move on to the next project. Change order number two is the larger project, this is due to mechanical modifications to the project due to unforeseen conditions affecting the current plan. We did some phase changes in phase one and phases for this summer compared to next summer. This is a $211,309 and 45 cent change order, so one of the larger change orders on that, and there's some detail in the materials as well for your review. And then change order three is with LS Black, again, contractors, for an increase of $22,307 due to cyclical utility modifications, existing conditions of improvements in the project scope. A lot of those are mechanicals with the electrical, as well as some additional plume units and things like that that we put into that project. So those are the three at the high school that are part of our LS Black construction. There's another one later on for the RHS abatement project, which is a different contractor. Any questions or additional detail requested on any of those?
I have a question on change order two.
Can I come up?
Thanks. Let me try to find it now. This is the one where the unforeseen, it was listed as unforeseen and that things weren't where they were supposed to be, or weren't where they were originally listed. So is that an issue of the prior installation, or some work that was done to move them to a new location, or is that the drawings just, you know, the plant engineer wasn't aware of where things were?
A combination of both would be the quick answer. There are some things that weren't in place where the existing ground's showing them to be in place, and then there were some other items that were buried from one addition to another, and so there was assumptions made on this serves this and it didn't serve that. So it also, as Craig mentioned, it ties into the abatement, where we had to switch some phasing around, and this is additional piping, removing a steam-to-hot water converter to a different location than was originally planned in order to serve the building this coming winter as well. And I know we've got all the backup in the board packets, you can see what we actually analyzed, so just a side note on the change orders, when the change orders come through, the contractors have very strict requirements on what they need to provide for pricing as far as material and labor breakdown. Once we review them at ICS, we go back and forth with the contractors to make sure that, I can stand up in front of you guys and say that I agree with this, we send them over to all the architects and engineers, and then they review them, and then they do the same thing if they have any discrepancies or see anything differently than what we analyzed, and then we go back to the contractor. So it goes through that process before we present it to you guys, before we actually draft a change order.
Thank you.
So since it sounds as though we could take these as a bundle, I feel like we could entertain a motion to approve change orders one, two, and three for the RHS facilities project, if anyone feels so moved.
I will move, I can say, change orders one, two, and three at the high school. I will move, I, uh, change orders one, two, and three at the high school as presented.
I will second it.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulson, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and these three change orders are approved. So I assume now we will move on to RSTEM numbers two, three, and four.
Correct. Um, so RSTEM change order number two is, um, some user group modifications and then a larger addition of electrical requirements for the two lab spaces. So being at the STEM facility, looking at how, um, the different lab equipment is used in that facility, making sure that we're building out for potential capacity. Um, there was some additional electrical work that was added into that as well as some other user group modifications as part of that project. That was sixty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-five dollars of change orders. Um, change order three is, um, changes in special education user group modifications and some other design clarifications. Um, so you can see that includes things like display boards, tack cords, marker boards, um, a walk-off mat and the entryway coming in from where the pool now is demolished that just was not included in those specifications. And then also some changes in select door hardware modifications to the RSTEM building. That is eighteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and sixty-one cents in modification change orders. And then change order number four in this project is due to some mechanical specification modifications as well as some finished detail clarifications and kitchen equipment modifications. Um, there's bathroom tile, um, modifications, metals transition strips. Um, there's also some reductions because we have a trash recycling grant that was received from Hennepin County, which previously was built into this project. So that's a reduction in this because we were able to source that outside of this contract as well. As, and then some additional fin tube radiation covers for classroom spaces, some modifications to that. Um, that was eleven thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety dollars and thirty-nine cents net, um, with those additions and reductions. Rain Garston project, um, currently to date took fourteen million, nine-hundred-and-eight-thousand-five-hundred-four dollars and ninety-seven cents up from fourteen million, eight-hundred from the beginning of this, uh, project.
Can I ask about user groups? Um, so the, the, a couple of the changes were doing a user group modifications. And so can you explain who the user groups are and, and is that how that works?
So the user groups are the, the physical staff that operate in these, in these rooms. And so there was multiple user group meetings throughout the design. And what these came about is at the, it was actually during the final furniture user group meetings. Like, okay, this is exactly what your space is getting and here's the furniture that's going to go in there. And then there were some things that came up like, oh, I really need this. The, the large one is for the electrical in those two STEM labs. Um, it's, they're dropped on cord reels and there's, I think, I believe twelve or sixteen in each one of those classrooms, which requires a lot more circuit and stuff like that. But that, so that's really, it's their, it's the users that are asking for these things. So we look at them and analyze and see if it's.
And through that process, they were involved all the way through the design phase of it. Um, so individual classroom teachers, grade levels, lab departments, um, different departments at the high school, each had user groups that walked through the space and said what are their needs and built that out. Inevitably, not everything could be thought of. And so this is one of those where that was added in. It was an additional component.
So, so this is, could be an example if something wasn't clearly listed or heard in the, in the initial telling of it and we're, we're realizing it now. Okay, thank you.
For example, when the furniture was there, it's like, oh, we're going to add these long tables and we want microscopes on it.
Right.
Well, do we have power for the microscopes? No, so.
Do you want?
Yep.
Uh, so we can bundle these three change orders as well. So that would be, uh, motion for change orders two, three, and four for RSTEM facilities projects if someone feels so moved.
I'll move change orders two, three, and four for RSTEM as presented.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Mr. Paulson and a second by Ms. Cole. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the change orders are approved. Uh, so this next one we will take on its own, uh, change order number one for RHS related to asbestos abatement.
And a good chunk of this change order should look familiar because it was previously approved as a change in the project scope um, with the details to be identified at the end of the project. So we have that net impact. Um, this was a part of the abatement project. Um, the materials in it were from IEA, who's been managing the abatement parts of the project in coordination with ICS. Um, and so here we see that, um, it's based on a true time and materials cost versus what was projected as part of that original bid. Um, the value of the change order is a hundred-and-eight-thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and eighty-eight cents, which is less than previously authorized changes, which were proven to not exceed a hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, two-hundred dollars. And this ends that part of the phasing project for that abatement. And some of that was additional cost this year with anticipated savings next year for the entire project.
No questions? Seeing none, we could then entertain a motion to approve change order number one.
So move.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulson, a second by Mr. Ashmead to approve change order number one at RHS for the asbestos abatement work. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the change order is approved. And last but not least is change order number five for RDLS.
Um, and this is, uh, the smallest of the group tonight with three thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and forty-six cents. RDLS is one that we've been working on a, a variety of value engineering options to reduce that cost that came in, um, reduce the cost that came into the bid that was higher than what was originally projected. Uh, this is a net increase of three thousand and it's just a variety of mechanical changes, door hardware changes, changes in tiles, um, crew batteries for emergency lights and makes it signage, um, in a series of minor, minor changes in that project. Uh, that brings the total cost of that project to eight million, nine-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and seventy-seven cents, uh, to date.
Seeing no questions, we could entertain a motion to approve change order number five.
I'm going to do, we accept RDLS change order number five as presented.
I will second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulson, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the change order is approved. Thank you very much. Uh, so we have a number of new business items before us this evening, all of which are first reviews of existing district policies. Um, and first up is board policy five eighty-five on student surveys.
So we have three policies. That's correct. We had a very successful July in terms of policy approval and our reward is three more policies to work on. So we're going to be working on student surveys, um, as is our board practice. Um, you'll see three different copies. You'll see the current original, um, of our policy, five eighty-five student survey. You'll see the MSBA model policy. And then you'll also see policy five eighty-five ours redlined with the integrated changes. Um, and that's actually starts on page two sixty-eight. And so I really want to bring your attention to two sixty-eight, um, which really talks about, um, our policy talks about student surveys and the conditions under which student surveys are given. Um, a couple of the changes in relation to policy recommendation is really the option for families to opt out and our responsibilities in terms of communicating. And these are really updated from MSBA through new case law. Um, and so those are some expectations of things that we would change in regard to our policy. Policy in general outlines processes by which we would give surveys, um, the anonymity and the way we would, um, allow surveys to occur and then just create some of that overall process. Um, and so it's here for the board to review, also see and redline what the likely proposed changes will be. And we'll bring that back, um, after doing a second review of the redlined copy. But I would assume that it will look very close to the redlined copy beginning on page two eighty-six. Um, and so as usual, if there are questions or wording suggestions that people have as they review, um, I suggest they actually review the redlined copy on two eighty-six. Um, take a look at that, um, with any questions or, or things to add to the conversation.
I have one question. So it's really clear to me how this policy makes sense for things like the Minnesota Student Survey, uh, that is administered by the state and collects all sorts of information about student behaviors and experiences and things like that. What I couldn't tell from reading this is whether things like the Google surveys that I feel like now happen all of the time as part of classes are also governed by this. Um, and if so, I think that to me leads to a different series of questions about how to make sure that we are clear that those kinds of surveys also would need to be in compliance for a policy like this. So I don't need an immediate answer, but that's the sort of biggest overarching question that I had.
Absolutely.
Can I ask, what is our, our method of, of providing notice or our proposed method of providing notice?
Um, so at present. Oh, that's funny. Um, at present, we're working on integrating policies into our handbook. Um, and we are creating a brand new parent and family handbook. We actually as a group looked at that, uh, just earlier today and are working on that. Um, and a lot of our required, uh, notifications will be in there. And then we're working on a distrib, distribution methodology. Um, and so we're in process of that. Um, we're also working on, and we begin, um, with principals and management team starting tomorrow, um, training in our policies and the implementation of our policies. So making sure one of those board guidelines, um, that you have outlined to admin is let's make sure that we all know what our, what our rules are, what our policies are and that we are training all of our staff. And so we're beginning with management team and then we'll be doing some all-staff training as we move forward to make sure that our actual behaviors align to all of our policies of course.
Is it, I'm just, look, the, the notice section, I mean, we have to give, it's, you know, we, if this is what we adopt, we'd have to provide parents the opportunity to review the survey and then choose to, you know, if they still choose to opt out. And so how much time is reasonable and, um, and, you know, how much advance notice and things like, you know?
Right. Those are some of the logistics we have to work out. Obviously, as redlined, there was a recent case, which you can see in the notes, um, at the bottom, um, that came up, um, changing that to a must-provide those types of options. Um, and so that's why the MSBA made those changes and obviously suggests them to districts.
Thank you.
So those are some of the things that we will look at prior to bringing it back. Um, having answers and also addressing those within, within the policy. Um, if there's also additional things that people think of in the next week or so, um, certainly bring those forward. Um, and we will work with that as we create draft number two. Um, all right, that transitions us into policy five eighty-two, um, and five eighty-two one, uh, notification for staff of violent behavior. Um, and this outlines a state statutory-based requirement to have a notification plan for, uh, violent behavior incidences. Um, similarly here, you see the policy in the guideline. Um, and then following that, you also see, um, copies of some redlined suggestions along with the MSBA policy, um, and the MSBA guidelines. Um, we anticipate this one coming back, um, significantly more than the policy we just scanned through quickly. Um, and so I'm not going to walk through all the language on this particular one. Um, this is a pretty in-depth policy and I'm going to suggest board members daytime. It's going to be at least three reads would be my guess, um, and probably go to the safe and supportive schools group um, as, as we really look about how we do this particular procedure.
Yeah, I think for me, having read through it, the overarching question that I'm going to be looking for is who makes the determination about what qualifies as quote-unquote violent behavior? And in our existing administrative guideline, there is actually a list that I think is helpful that is not in the redlined version that I just saw. So I think continuing to get clear about who makes those determinations and how to ensure that we are making those determinations and then communicating in a really responsible manner is going to be the main thing that I'll probably focus on a lot.
Absolutely. All right, and third and final, and this is more similar to the first policy. This is policy six oh eight, education of pupils with disabilities. Um, you will see similarly in the board packet, the original, um, six oh eight. You'll see the MSBA policy and then there are some minor changes which are put in in the redlined version. So again, on this one, I'm going to focus your attention on board packet page three oh five. Um, packet page three oh five begins the redlined version, um, outlines, um, responsibilities and how we go through the processes of providing instructional services and services for pupils with disabilities. Um, and so this is a good opportunity to read and note some of the, again, more minor changes compared to what we'll be proposing in terms of the notification in the middle. Um, so we'll be looking at board members to read, um, and double check and see if there are any language or additions in, in that particular policy, three oh five, three oh six, or page is three oh five, three oh six, policy six oh eight.
I do think when this comes back for a second round of discussion, I, I noticed the change in language from students with disabilities to disabled students. We're going to switch you back. Great, thank you. Cause I just thought it would be important to talk about a language change. Got it. Thank you.
I had no self-sustained confidence.
And first, first read on all of this, so we'll have multiple.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so seeing no other comments or questions, we will move into the advanced planning section of the agenda, beginning as always with any sort of legislative update. Um, our legislatively-minded, uh, board representative, Mr. Tensing, is not here. So Superintendent Yunowski, I'll defer to you first.
Well, and AMSD actually has not met. And so we haven't, and obviously the legislature, legislators are not in session at this time. And so we've obviously had a pretty significant break and no significant updates. Uh, we do actually come back together and begin talking about legislative platforms for the coming year. Um, this will be more of a policy-based year than a budget year. And so as we begin talking about our legislative conversations prior to the session, we'll really be looking at conversations with our legislators around policy rather than finance. Um, and so board members should begin to think for our legislative platform, which will be developing in October, November, prior to meeting with our, with our legislators again for our typical yearly study session. What are those policy areas? Um, and, and those are the things that we'll suggest, um, based on our team at AMSD and some of the work that we've done, um, continuing some of the things that we've done in the past, but also looking at what are the top priorities of our board members as we look at the needs of our district and of our community.
Anything else on the legislative front? Okay, um, we will move into information and our questions from members of the board. And as noted in the agenda, I am going to begin with a summary of the closed session at our July fifteenth meeting for the purposes of the superintendent's annual evaluation as governed by Minnesota State Statute thirteen D point oh five. An acknowledgement of the potentially questionable sound quality. I also wanted to say if anybody, um, wants to get in touch with me directly, I am happy to share the, the written statement here if it would be easier to read than it is for me to listen to, uh, to listen to me here for the next couple of moments. So with that, here is the summary. The board conducted its annual performance review for Superintendent Yunowski on July fifteenth, twenty nineteen. We are grateful for Dr. Yunowski's leadership and the work that he does as our superintendent. It is affirming to see his direct reports feel the same way as they describe the trust they have in him as a leader and the support he provides while holding them to high standards in the pursuit of excellence for our district. The board is aligned in its confidence in Dr. Yunowski's leadership and found he consistently met or exceeded our expectations in the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen school year. The key strengths that emerged clearly and consistently among feedback gathered by the board are Dr. Yunowski's skills in the management and planning of a complex organization such as ours as well as his oversight of resource allocation. We also acknowledge there are always areas for growth and look forward to working with Dr. Yunowski to define what the specific areas of focus and goals will be for the twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty school year, both for him as a superintendent and for the district at large. These likely areas of focus that we started to discuss in the evaluation process were also consistent across the board and Dr. Yunowski's direct reports. Consistent achievement for all kids across and within student groups, strategic engagement with families and community and student enrollment are at the top of all of our minds and will likely be central to our work this school year and in the upcoming strategic planning process. On behalf of the board, I appreciate Dr. Yunowski for his commitment to our students, staff, and community and look forward to working with him as we continue to strive for excellence and equity in Richfield Public Schools. So that ends the official summary of our evaluation with Superintendent Yunowski. I also wanted to share with the audience, with the community, with viewers. I also wanted to share with the audience, with the community, with viewers, that as a result of this annual evaluation process, the board is beginning to move into discussions with the superintendent regarding a renewal of his contract. The current contract extends through June 30th, 2020. And as is typical in terms of timing, we will be seeking to have a proposed contract for full board review and approval this fall. So wanted to take the opportunity to share all of that this evening. I will take a break now and see if there are any other pieces of information or questions the board would like to share. Okay. The one other thing that I was going to share, if nobody else did, is just a reminder that the filing deadline for school board elections is underway. And so interested candidates for the school board have until August 13th at 5:00 PM to file for election for a filing fee of $2 here at the Central Education Building. So you just walk in door number five, walk a little bit down the hallway, it'll be on the left, and friendly people will guide you to get where you need to go. Okay. Finally, are there any items that board members would like to request for discussion on an upcoming agenda that have not already been discussed? Okay. Our next meeting will take place on Monday, August 19th at 7:00 PM, and we'll begin with time for public comment. Am I correct in saying that meeting is also going to be in this room?
I would suggest it at this time, and if we're able to move back to the boardroom, we can post that.
So plan for this space. We will try to come up with some good audio solutions in light of the sound quality that people are experiencing this evening. But, so Monday, August 19th. And then just to note that our first meeting in September will be on Tuesday, September 3rd, given the Labor Day holiday. So I believe that is everything on the agenda, and we could entertain a motion to adjourn. I remember that we adjourned. So we have a motion by Ms. Malik and a second by Ms. Cole. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye, and the meeting is adjourned at 8:12 PM. Thank you very much.